She just said she was going.
No kidding, no kidding.
Hopefully she'll dial in.
Yes.
Whenever you're ready.
And we really like to shop late.
Okay, we'll call the meeting or the special meeting of Sturgis Municipal Utilities, uh, April twenty first, twenty twenty-two. And let's do roll call. Kim?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Here. Shh. And Craig?
Here.
Um. We'll use that for agenda approval too. So let's go to the water tower project. So we need to vote on that too.
For the agenda.
Um, yeah, let's, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, we'll proceed to vote. Kim?
Yes.
Uh, Brian? Craig?
Aye.
Okay, water tower project. You're up, Jim.
Okay. So last week, we did go over the bids briefly with you after we had the bid letting. Tonight, it's time to consider those bids and potentially award a contract. So USDA went through, um, you know, all of their procedures they have incurred with the Obit, um, with three hundred thousand, deduct offering the later completion date. And that's from Caldwell Tanks, um, two million thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. I don't know if you want me to go back through some of the other bids again. You all still have that, um, copies if you need.
Are you familiar with these folks?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all of you, the four low bidders have all, are all well-known water tower contractors in the upper Midwest. Um, so you had a good group of contractors, um, the tightness of their bids together, if you look.
Yeah, that's what happens.
That tells you what the price of a water tower is at the market at this time. It's always good to have a tight grouping of bids.
So you're still not sure if that three hundred thousand dollar DDE would be more if this was not accepted into the bid on the year from now? Does supply chain recover?
Everything that we're being told right now is that prices are not getting back down in a year.
Take longer.
It might never come back down. It might be the new normal.
They said two thousand eight.
Yeah, I mean, nobody has that.
Yeah, I'm with you.
I'm with you.
Uh, Ben, out of all of this stuff that's being looked at, I meant to ask this last meeting, but out of the water tower, the, the new, uh, the new lines and the new mains, which is our highest priority over the next five to ten years?
If, if the city continues to expand the way it has been, I would say the tower is a bigger priority. Because, for instance, yesterday, we pumped three hundred and two thousand gallons yesterday. Our tower alone holds one fifty. So that tells you if we had a major problem, our town would run out of water in half a day.
So will this continue to operate after the new ones are up?
Yes.
Okay.
When this is done, we're gonna have four hundred thousand gallons in elevated storage. We've got some storage over here, but it's, it's not really useful because our wells aren't really in continuous production. So what this does is this gets us to a point where we have usable water ready to go. And this summer, we're really gonna, I mean, it's really crucial when we're pumping three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand gallons some days when it's really hot. This is definitely a priority. If I thought, you know, we were gonna re-dress acres or we were gonna let off with our expansion, then I might say mains, but it doesn't appear that's exactly. And no matter what we do to this tower, whether we continue to buy water or if we were to put our plant inserts or build a new plant, no matter what, we've gotta have the capacity.
So from what I'm aware of that quick, the development corporation's looking at Quickstar and then also another housing phase, which would be fifty new, if that goes through and if those are developed quickly, so I mean, there's, it doesn't seem like things would anticipate at all.
All I hear about is just more interest in expansion, so.
Will we be able to abandon this ground well out here?
I think, so there's two of them and we fully plan to abandon one of them almost right away. We're gonna kinda do an assessment of them both and then we'll hang, as long as we have the wells, we have to have one of them. But, uh, yeah, we'll pick the better one and abandon the other one, so that'll happen quickly.
Um, I think, I think both are, both of these projects, I think, I don't think one supersedes the other, really. You're really talking about apples and oranges here. I think the thing that concerns me is something that al- always concerned me when I was an insurance agent, and that is that, um, if we lose our fire class rating, which is a seven, uh, and we have to go to eight, everybody's homeowner's insurance and commercial property insurance in this town is gonna go up, uh, because of underwriting. And I know for a fact that there are, a lot of the homes in Northwest Stewart, uh, places, particularly where those private lines are, that simply don't have fire protection. When they, when there's a fire, there was a fire several years ago, just up north, being on Gate Street, and they couldn't, I remember watching the firefighters that night, and they couldn't hook up to that water, that, uh, to that water main, and I asked why, and they were dumping it into that. Um, and I. They don't have a capacity in that line. If they hooked up to it, they'd collapse that line and then we'd be in a real pit. So there's, you know, those water mains, this water main project is really.
Is there a map of where the, where the existing lines are that will be replaced and where the new ones?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I did that out in the past. I don't have that right here.
Is that something that, Mike, do you have that?
Sure, I do.
Okay. Is that something you can email to me?
Yeah, why don't you send that to all of the.
And is that, is that something that's prioritized on severity, I guess, as well?
Well, we went through that process when we, um, wrote the preliminary generic report and then we sat down with city staff.
And that's, I'm just asking, yeah, I'm four months into that.
I understand that. I, I'm trying to answer.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
In a short way, but with enough detail.
Sure.
And, and so what we did, we identified the lines that were still four-inch cast iron, for one thing. Identified some lines that were close to some leaking underground storage tank, identified sites which needed to be switched from PVC to ductile iron, uh, for safety of everyone not getting that contaminated soil, that gasoline product into the line. And so that's how we came up with, and we did a full inventory of the whole town and identified which ones would be replaced. And, um, I don't know how many times I stood in front of the board, you know, and shared that. So it's been through and vetted very well. Um, I have. About the water mains in preparation for next month, but through the water tower first and then go there. It's up to you, I guess.
Does it look like we'll have any issues in getting all the water main project that we wanted?
USDA will be happy to, um, advance any additional funding that they need. Um, so yes, we, we will be able to do it. Um, the decision's gonna be, you know, what's the bid, what's the bottom line on payments, affordability, those things.
Will it be bid in such a way that you can scale things back based off of bid results and affordability?
You can always do change orders. It's not, it's not currently set up to bid in stages. It's currently set up to bid as one.
I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at these financials, but, um, and again, I called Ash to discuss this with him. The financials are very, um, this is what was handed out by Chip at the last meeting. They're gonna cover this again in May.
Okay.
But, I mean, it puts us in a very leveraged position. We're going from a non-inhibited water fund to the largest debt that we've ever taken on, and our debt ratio goes to a level that doesn't allow you to have capital improvement thereafter. So if we wanna do something, Xenia continues to lay around ten, twelve percent rate increases, and you wanna do something different, if you wanna bond for a lot of money, your liquidity ratio is gonna go down substantially. So this is a huge amount of money. I'm not saying anything's not needed. I'm not saying it's not something to do. I just, uh, to me, it would make sense to bid it in chunks because we don't know how the bids are gonna come back. This, this came in forty-seven percent over estimate. So if there, that's why I was asking the questions. And plus, I'm in the new, down the corner, so I'm just, uh, you go from zero debt on a water fund to, um, a point, I can't remember what page it's on, um, but it's, it's a liquid, it's a very simple liquidity ratio. If you look at these spreadsheets, there, there's like four or five lines, and I don't wanna get into it tonight, but, um, it's, it's called the debt service coverage ratio, which is a fancy word for should I buy this much of a car or not, just because I can and just because the bank will approve it, doesn't mean we should. Because if I need to buy a new car after that for my wife's, because it breaks down, may not cash it. That's all I'm good at, so.
And also, those are all good thoughts and, and, you know, help us look into the crystal ball a little bit to, to see where this may or may not be going, but, um, there's nothing here that, there's nothing in either one of these that doesn't require all of it to be done. And, and I guess my feeling is that we just need to swallow this hole and, and get, get jobs started and get it done, so. Comments?
One thing that kinda bears us mentioning is, for a long time, Stewart did regular main replacements, you know, on a regular basis. Every summer, they'd do a few blocks here, a few blocks here, and it kinda kept us, you know, at a level, this was really before I started, previous to two thousand five. So then, the last time we did main replacement in this town was in two thousand five. That was the Division Street project. Everything we've done since has either been new development or running new lines to areas that previously didn't have.
Didn't the city put in new lines and we did downtown too in two thousand one?
Not water line, they didn't.
I thought we did.
Well, you didn't. I mean, they, there was, yeah, there was, there was not water. I mean, that's still the original cast iron, around eight-inch cast iron down there, so.
And that new development, we, we ran water line up to that development south of town. And what year was that? You remember, Ben?
That was in two thousand seventy. I'm trying to say we've never done a project. I'm just saying we haven't done main replacement in seventeen years. And so it's put us at a position where, you know, we, we spent money and we put in new water lines, but we have really neglected our mains. And so I just wanna, I think that's part of the reason why this hurts so bad. It's such a big project. It's because we, unfortunately, for a lot of reasons, really neglected our water mains. As I look at this, I just. A point in the future when it's gonna be cheaper to put mains in. And that could happen, but generally, the best time to do it was yesterday, and we're moving along, and this is a huge job.
As I recall, Ben, we had some, uh, the bid, that bid came in so low, we looped the south side. Uh, it came in so low that we did replace three or four blocks of mains.
We did. They weren't replacements. We added mains where there was no main. There was three little one-block runs we did.
Yeah.
And, which was great, but, you know, didn't do anything with the existing stuff. So I just wanted to throw that in there. That's kind of our history with main replacements, where we've been with it the last fifteen, twenty.
Yeah, I don't think I, I was around when they were still doing main replacements. I remember Doug talking about that, that they would do that, you know, every year they'd try to take three or four blocks and do them, but, um, that was even before my time, so. Okay, um, do I hear a motion to accept the, the low bid from, um, Caldwell Tanks Inc. of Louisville, Kentucky?
I believe they sent you two resolutions, right, Mike?
Only one.
Well, maybe it's all one.
I think it's probably.
It's kinda two pieces, but it's one resolution.
Yeah, I can give it to you if you want.
I've got it printed. But I just, I mean, I think that's what you need to do is, is approve that resolution and if you need to go through the steps.
So we're gonna approve, uh, both the part A and B together in one resolution? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion will be to accept bids and awards of contract for twenty twenty-one water storage tank project and resolution number twenty-two dash oh four U, resolution awarding contract for the twenty twenty-one elevated water storage tank and two Caldwell Tanks. Do I hear a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll say. Ben Boone seconded, uh, proceed to vote. Brian? Craig?
Aye.
And Kim?
Yep.
Okay. Um, we have an item here, Congress, or progress update.
Yeah, it's so.
Basically, that's what you've been talking about.
Kind of been talking about that a little bit, but I also prepared, um, after last week, I kinda made sure I had a few answers to some questions that I thought you might have. And so, uh, that's what this handout is about. Uh, the front sheet is just kind of an outline of the things I wanna mention. The second sheet is the bid gap for what we just approved. Um, the third sheet is the updated cost opinion on the water mains as of Monday. Um, we took a look at some very recent bid, um, bid tabulations on similar water main projects. Um, so we feel pretty good about where we are there. The next page is projected for, I should say, um, recommended project schedule for the water mains. And then the final is just kind of an overview of your USDA budget, um, and where we're at with that. So the updated cost opinion on the water mains is four million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand twenty-four dollars. I think that's about a hundred thousand more than the one we did about three months ago. So while they came up a little bit more, it hasn't changed a whole lot in the, in the last three months. I will tell you that, uh, when we make our estimates, we don't try to be the low bidder. I think I've mentioned that to you before. Um, I think there's a good chance that we can get a bid under that number. Particularly because we have used some recent bid results to come up with this. And so, while I can't, you know, I would hope we could push down close to four million, but we won't know that till bid day, will we? So that's just, I experience what, what I know about water mains.
And I'd like to talk about that. What kind of contingency was there, Stewart?
Well, originally, when we did the, the long-term estimates and wrote the report, we had a ten percent contingency. Um, right now, this number has no contingency in it. This is just our best estimate of what that bid might be.
Okay, that walk, just, so we're on the same page because this all ties together on what's affordable, and Chip gave us the update. But that contingency that he handed us, um, from a budget perspective, is all eaten up with the water tower we just approved. So it's, there is, that's why there is a contingency.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, um, the schedule that, that we're recommending, and there's a few reasons for that, um, would be at your next meeting to authorize going out for bids on those water mains. That would be the, the May twelfth meeting. At the June second, we would hold a bid letting. At your board meeting on June ninth, we would consider those bids and potentially award a contract. We may not be able to quite award on the ninth, depending on USDA and their timeframe, um, that adds some additional funding to your project. Uh, that might not quite happen that quickly. And so we may have to, um, come back a week or two later, depending on how that all unfolds. Of course, it's always your decision. It's your project. I've said that from, from day one. If we were to award in June, then in July, we would approve those contract and bonds and issue a notice to proceed. And in that construction period, um, it looks like a long time, but we talked to several water main contractors that do a lot of work in this area. They are all pretty busy for twenty twenty-two already. If we allow a little bit of work to happen this fall, um, all of twenty-three, and then a little bit of finish-up work in twenty-four and the spring of twenty-four, I feel like we can get a better bid than if we had a completion date at the end of twenty-three, just because they may not get as much done this year, depending on weather, depending on their other jobs. And so that's one of the things we often look at is, what can we do to get the best bid possible for our customers? Sometimes that's allowing those contractors a little more flexibility on that completion date.
So back to this alternate, you know, again, I come from the city side of things. If you wanna, if you wanna improve ten streets, you bid seven, then you bid eight as an alternate nine, and ten.
I understand.
So that doesn't cost, that didn't cost the city anymore to do that?
No.
It just, if it fits our budget, then we can do.
I'm not saying we can't do that. I'm just saying it wasn't set up that way yet.
So can it be done that way at no additional cost to our utility customers if, if everybody has a chance to flip through this and, you know, based on the severity Ben's talking about, that doesn't hurt us to do that?
No, it doesn't. That's an option. And we just need to know that, you know, a few day, enough time ahead of advertisement that we can change the paperwork. It's not a thing that takes us weeks. It would take us between half day and a day probably to change the paperwork, to do, um, an alternate bid and define some different sections.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the water tower overage and thinking, okay, you know, based on whatever is affordable.
Mm-hmm.
What does that look like for us? Why would we not do that?
I don't have a reason that we wouldn't do it. It's just not the way that it was approached here. And so assuming, then if you go down the front sheet, assuming that my new estimate of four-two-two-eight is close. That's quite a bit higher than we hoped for, you know, two years ago. Um, you do have your CDPG grant of a half a million, and then you have an existing USDA loan of almost five million. And that loan rate is fixed at one and a half percent. That will not change, no matter what we do here, um, for that amount of loan. If we need more loan than that, that's the, this is where you need to know what your options are gonna be. The additional loan is gonna be in the neighborhood of one point eight million, hopefully closer to one point five if we get a really good bid. Let's skip down to kind of the, the funding deadlines I put in here near the bottom. If we get additional USDA loan and get that allocated prior to July one, it will be at a two percent interest. That's what their current interest rate hits for these programs. They tell me that as of July one, because of the economy and a lot of other factors, they expect that interest rate to jump about two percent, and it's gonna go to four for any new money after July one. So that will not impact anything that's allocated before July one. So that's why it's important, it's important to lock in whichever part of the water mains we wanna do, perhaps with an alternate bid, like you suggested, that might be a good way to go.
You got an interest rate risk and.
Yeah.
Pay all your costs.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so anyway, I just, I wanted you to know that if we delay things a month, it's gonna cost you more money on interest. So we kinda need to keep it moving. I'm perfectly willing to look at this idea of small terms.
Well, and just based off what Ben and Pat are recommending for prioritization, how you guys come up with that, I'm just, I don't know why we wouldn't do that based off of the grant.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the other thing about your CDPG grant, they are, you're required to get some. Um, six months when they finalize, which should happen right around the first of May. So we need to get some of that money in a contract and you, and actually spent in the next six months, or else that grant you could lose too. So then you don't.
Five hundred.
The five hundred left.
Does the five hundred go up in proportion with the additional?
No, that's a fixed number. And, um, so I just wanted, I said, I put the debt comparison. That's one of the things we did consider with the board as we put the report together, was that you had this fifteen or, I don't remember if it was fifteen or twenty years, but you had an existing debt with a payment of around a hundred and seventy-eight thousand a year that was gonna get paid off right about now, maybe next year, maybe, I don't remember this year, next year, right about now. Yeah. And, um, the new debt was gonna be just a little bit less than that. So it was a way to get some improvements, lock in some long-term low-interest money, and not have to increase any bills because it's the same amount you're already paying.
It's not what was doubled. It's a hundred and seventy-five. The payment structure we looked at, that's three hundred and fifty.
Well, which, which term?
Depending on when we go out, go out, but it's doubled.
Which term are you looking at there?
Well, what I would say, it depends.
Yeah, exactly.
Terms. But the one that's been looked at is double it twenty-five years.
So, so that's the origi, so, yeah, so that's the original USDA loan. If we had not had an increased budget, would have been a little bit less. That's the one sixty-six number. Now, right below that, I'm telling you, for this additional money that we likely will need, that's either an, if we get it at two percent, it's an additional sixty-six thousand a year. So that, added that to your one sixty-six, that's two thirty-two. So that's about fifty thousand a year more than your old debt was.
That's if you go with a forty-year payment.
That is if you go with.
My son will be retired by then. I will gladly go navigate something like that. I'm sorry, that's, for, for a municipality to take out a debt for forty years, I've never even heard of that.
Uh, it's done all the time.
And that's fine.
And, and so the good news on that debt is it can be repaid early with no penalty. So, you know, if you have good years, you can pay it down. Um, the interest rate is locked. It can't change. And so, you know.
I think the other thing we did with that kind of refinancing we did there is I think that got us the bigger tank too, didn't it, Ben?
Well, there were, there was some backstory to that bigger tank. Um, USDA, when they reviewed the report, Brian, from your information, we had looked at the option of either a one fifty thousand or a two fifty thousand new tower. We looked at both options. And, um, at first USDA said that, that they did, they weren't in favor of the two fifty size, um, of need in the town, and, and so we were leaning more toward the smaller tower. Um, then they had a different group review that, and they decided that because the existing tower is already, what, fifty years old or something like that, that for the future, it would be better to go ahead and have the larger tower. So then they had us do a short amendment to the report, and that's where we ended up.
Anything else, Jeff?
And that's pretty much it. Um, I just want you to know that, um, you know, depending on how this unfolds, you, I know you've got some tough decisions to make. I'm not trying to hide that at all. But I am saying that we need, in my opinion, we need to keep it moving to get as, whatever money you decide to spend to keep the interest rate as low as we can.
But I mean, if you go with that twenty-five-year payment structure, our current payment next year, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and then that twenty-five-year, if you did the full amount, the payments go to three hundred and twenty-three thousand. So that's, and that's the concern, I guess, I was getting at, of your, if you wanna buy a house and then go triple your mortgage payment, then you become house poor, right? I mean, it's the same concept as this. If there's something else that needs to come up or needs to get done, uh, to me, again, I'm four months into. Just me with four months and being completely new. But if I've got, you know, is everybody familiar with Russia? And you care what's going on right now? Okay, so Germany won't shut off Russia's oil, right? Because they need it. That's their competitive advantage for like Volkswagen on cars. They buy cheap Russian oil. Well, they can't shut it off. So to me, we're, we are Germany, and Russia is Xenia. And if we keep, uh, you know, the current rate we're going, nine, nine, and twelve, then we're just at their mercy. And if that continues, what do we lock ourselves into down the road for us to consider a water treatment plant as an alternative? I don't even know if that's financially feasible. I'm just saying whatever, right? And so if you do that, then we become, we become Russia, and we make Xenia Germany, where we're selling it water. And that's, that's what Panora does currently. That's their business model. I don't even know if that's feasible, but I, I don't like Xenia. I'd say that if Gary was here, I don't care. I don't like how they do business. They don't treat our customers right. That's just my own opinion. Um, but that, that's what I worry about getting over-leveraged based off of what this data tells me. Not anybody's opinion. I don't care about anybody's opinion. It's just, how much can we afford reasonable without having, um, financial risk to another, uh, direction that needs to go that way.
Well, I think, I think, I guess the way I'm looking at that is, if we were to do our own treatment plant, I mean, let's face it, regardless of what it's costing us, Xenia delivers us really good water. And, um, you know, a new treatment plant with the resources we have for water.
And, um, you know, a new treatment plant with the resources we have for water, I'm not sure we're gonna get that good of water. I don't know if we will.
You may not. And the very bottom line of this standout, I do give you a ballpark cost of a new water treatment plant.
And where is that at?
Very bottom line of your front sheet. We're looking at eight to ten million dollars. You're looking at even on a long, well, sorry, at the twenty-year term. So the six hundred and eleven thousand per year, we'll pay that off in twenty years, but that's a whole lot of money. And I'm not saying it's not the right choice. We set it up right.
No, enough information to even say that it's affordable or, you know, you save by doing it. I'm just saying the what if, if we have, I, I don't know what the catastrophe is. And if you, if you pedal away all your liquidity into one deal for twenty-five or forty years.
And, and we work with many small towns in southwest Iowa, and some of those towns over the years have chosen, for various reasons, to stop treating their own water and start buying water, either from Surrwa or Xenia or Regional out of Boca. Other towns, even, even some very small towns, still have their own wells and treat their own water. Sometimes that's due to proximity. They are not close to available water. Sometimes that's because the board said, we don't wanna be dependent on Xenia.
And that's just my.
Right.
They've been financially bankrupt before, okay? They defaulted on debt. And now what, you know, just right now, we're looking at these rate increases. Yeah, it's at the top of the house, not at the customer basis. We can buffer that. You know, again, there's no promise of long that this will sell there.
I'm not arguing any of those points.
And I'm not saying this stuff isn't needed by any stretch. That's not my point. I just, you spend all your pennies in the piggy bank, there's no penny left to go.
That is true.
Change direction, and then you become, you know.
That is true. The one good thing you have is a one, one and a half percent interest rate that's locked in. And with inflation, then you're paying that off in cheaper dollars. So that's not a bad place to be. The question is how much and how long?
The rates are, the rates are great. Well, I think, you know, I. Go ahead, Ben.
No, I, well.
I, I, I look back at the history of, of our water fund. And I see there were times when we had a seventeen percent increase from Xenia. You don't remember that, apparently. And we had, we went through a period where we had a lot of off-budget issues coming. This old tank, when we built this building, we had to tear out that old oil tank. That was about sixty green. And we had to replace that, uh, that water line from Redfield got trashed. And that was another fifty or sixty thousand. And it's just, it's, that type of thing is just something you gotta swallow hard at the time and get it done, you know? And it's, yeah, we're taking on a lot of debt here. And Brian, you know about taking on debt because the city is, owes one about fourteen million.
But that also has a return on the job. We've also got ninety homes, Come and Go, Casey's, Carl, Katie Properties, Roamark. All of those pay for that debt. So it's not that's debt on a basic, uh, core property of the city. It's new debt. This doesn't do that.
I think the additional revenue is gonna help with that, that we get from this because of that kind of growth. And we're not, we're definitely not gonna get it unless we, unless we make this kind of an investment. So I guess that's where I'm making the difference.
I just wanted to add that fundamentally, your distribution is the most vital part of your water system. Because you, sometimes you may produce water, you may buy water, but how you get that water, your customers, it's really vital. And there is potentially payback on this because we've talked about our water loss. We know our water loss is pretty high. This could potentially make a pretty big dent in that water loss. And I just wanna add, I worked for a town, a couple towns over for a while. What they did, and I'm not trying to exaggerate anything, but they let their water loss get so out of control that eventually percent water loss. When you get to a point like that, you're so strained with your budget just paying for all that extra water that is literally being wasted. But then you don't even have the position to, to do the improvements because you just don't have the extra revenue, you know? And so while, I mean, I know this is a tough thing to do, but when you look at how old we've let a lot of these, these mains are so far beyond their useful lifespan. And then you look at, we could save some money with water loss. And I, I just say, ah, let's put this off five years, and then five years. Oh, man, it's, you know, it's even more expensive than it was then. They will put it off a little longer. And eventually your water loss just gets so out of control. And with Xenia's cost, you know, we can't afford to have this water just steeling out, you know, to loss. So I just.
And so what proportion of the improvements of the five million is for replacing water lines versus new water lines? I just don't know this.
It's almost a hundred percent replacement.
Yeah, we are, bro. We are adding a few lines.
There's a few. There's a few.
So is it eight to twenty? Is it nine to ten?
I don't have that. I've already topped my head.
This is where prioritization is gonna be such a challenging thing because the water lines we're replacing are so old, shot, don't have to convince anyone they need replaced. The places where we are expanding are places where if we don't do this expansion, we're gonna get into trouble. Because like this, we run out of this new development. They're about to build fifty more houses out there, potentially. That line, we've got so many customers on this long dead-end line. We're, if we don't do this, we're gonna have issues.
Well, what you're doing is giving yourself two ways to get water out there.
I thought you hooked into another one, uh, that, that seat had a, a backup line going around Highway Six.
They're talking about that. That has not happened. And that's still on, there's a dead-end line that feeds that whole place. This would put a loop, so instead of having two little fingers out there, but they're still on one dead-end line.
Right, and what you're talking about is, you guys approved that at the last meeting, correct? To move forward with B and K?
Right, yeah. They haven't even talked to the school yet to give permission. They haven't purchased the land yet.
Sure.
None of that is really at all. Technically, it's still a dead end. Imagine with the balloon on the, that's what it's gonna, right now, it's a long pipe string of two forks. Okay, it's gonna put a loop, still on the end of the long string, still one dead-end line. This other line is a totally different feed that ties that in. So you have two, right now, if we have one main break, we're gonna have the high school and hundreds of homes out of water, and it's only gonna get worse. So that's just one thing. The other stress is, we've been talking about this for several years now. We've made some promises to some people. That doesn't mean we have to come through on those, but I sure don't wanna be the person that has to go tell them, sorry, we prioritized, you didn't make the cut.
But if you knocked on your neighbor's door and you told him the utilities was gonna spend seven million dollars, do you think they know that?
They probably don't know that, but they know nothing of the project, the need, none of that. They don't know none of that. I can tell you this, if I knocked on my neighbor's door, well, I happen to live on a street that's gotten in water. If I knocked on my neighbor's door and showed them a cross-section of the main that's out in front of their house, they would definitely say, spend whatever you have to spend to fix that because that's not good. I mean, there's no question about that.
So how many blocks does this cover? How many, uh, does this cover?
This is approximately fifty percent of our mains in the town. Most towns don't do a project with this scope. So when you think like forty years, that's hard to wrap my head around. It's hard to wrap your head around that replaces half of your system in one shot.
So six-inch pipe, we've got thirty, almost thirty-five thousand feet. That's roughly a hundred blocks.
So I mean, but getting into the volume that's covering up the nine customers we had, we think it would hit half of those, or half of the distribution for those. Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, without looking at, I hate to say.
We've got four hundred and sixty-nine curb stops, which is that's how many services we're.
Four hundred and sixty-nine.
Something in services, yes.
Well, the other thing you need to think about here, and we talked about, the city has revenue on that stuff. But, and we did, we've done a lot of development out here in these new areas. But unless we put these new mains in, the development, development in the rest of the city is gonna stop. We're not gonna see any new development. Because a lot of, a lot of the new development that's gone in, in northwest or, are private lines. And, well, you guys went out and we tried to find the line to the, the private line out to the racetrack. And we dug for, what, about a week and still couldn't find it.
Same with the line out. Two hundred-foot line for my house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same with the line that feeds that we were planning on placing those out by.
Mine's probably three or four hundred. But it's from like, it's from the curve that, you know. I know, I know.
And we've got.
Mine was a sewer line of six hundred feet.
We've gotta stop running those private lines out to homeowners who live within our water district and aren't getting water service. Yeah, they're getting water, but they had to, they had to develop the line themselves to get it there. Mike Gobbo, I think I got a perfect idea. So since we're focusing on expanding and repairing and replacing our infrastructure, I think that we should ask the city to help comp that with TIP revenue to cover some of these costs. I'm just giving crap, so.
Well, one thing about it, they're gonna, there's gonna be projects moving forward here, and they are going to be asking for our contribution to help with these projects. You definitely have to be thinking real hard about it. I just look at it like, gosh, we've done a lot of work, spent a lot of money to help with some new expansion and looking at Katie and looking, you know, everything out to the east. The attention of the people that live in our town who have been paying water rates for years and years who say, when is it my turn? Well, this is their turn, you know, finding their.
And on the city side, the TIP revenue from the new housing is paying for a million dollars of sewer improvements that is in the core city. So all the lining and replacement, you know, they're using the tax dollars out there to pay for that. But that doesn't, that, you know, the money on, on water doesn't work that way. Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.
Yeah, probably a different one.
Okay, nice. We'll get that one for you. Yeah. Well, can we do it, uh?